Good morning, everyone. This is the, uh, this is Delaware County Board of Finance meeting. Um, it's Monday, October twentieth, twenty twenty-five. The time is eight forty-eight. Uh, John, could you call the roll, please?
Turn your mic on, John, please.
That's a good idea. Commissioner Rigan.
Present.
Commissioner Brand.
Present.
Commissioner Polk.
Present.
Commissioner Henry.
Here. Very good. Okay, uh, Brad, do you have new business for us?
I do. Um, so, um, with some of our, um, strategic planning, uh, one was to, uh, create an investment policy. Um, it looks like that we had not had one in the past, and so I went out, um, and also went out to other counties, uh, as well as the state, uh, and created the, the investment policy that is before you. Um, it's basically establishing an investment management policy. Um, we can look at it on a yearly basis or as needed, whichever you guys just, whatever we decide. Um, and I just, basically, it's, it's to, uh, kind of put it in writing, the investment policy for the county. And so, um, we also, I, I reached out to everybody, sent this out to everybody to get feedback, uh, had some feedback on it, so made some changes, um, where we needed to, that would be more pertinent to Delaware County. And so what you see before you, um, is the investment policy that we need to look at and adopt, hopefully.
Are there any questions in reference to the policy? Jerry, do you have any?
No.
Yeah, no questions. I just want to clarify a couple of things. So this does add a section on ethics and conflict of interest.
Yes.
Which is, uh, which was recommended by our municipal advisor, Baker Tilly.
Mm-hmm.
Um, this does have a final maturity section. We added that. And then in order to have that final maturity section, which I believe is section ten.
Yes.
Um, if we want to exercise that, we would have to pass an ordinance. I just want to, I don't think we necessarily need that in the policy, but, uh, the county would, would have to adopt an ordinance pursuant to Indiana Code five dash thirteen dash nine dash five-point-seven if we wanted to exercise that final, uh, maturity language that was up to twenty-five percent of the county's total portfolio. And then this, you mentioned reviewing this on an annual basis, which I'm fine with, but this has specific language in it that expires after four years.
Right, right. Yeah, I think, you know, is, as, as the market is, is a, um, you know, obviously, right now, we're in a downward, um, is what they are saying. Um, so this might be something that we need to look at, you know, according to that. That's what I was kind of thinking, that we look at it from that. But, um, yes, it does, um, you know, one of the things I don't, uh, invest in because we like to have the cash flow is, is CDs or anything longer than two-year. I don't, I basically do on a daily. We can get our money tomorrow if we needed it. Uh, if we send it in today, we can have it tomorrow. So, um, it's very liquid, um, assets on all of the investments I do.
And I agree with that strategy. And just so that my fellow commissioners understand, this is one of the first steps we have to take. We don't have a bond rating currently, and part of our strategic capital plan, uh, it requires us to put a, a policy in place, and this is that action.
Mr. Broke, have you reviewed the plan?
I have not. I've not been provided a copy.
So I sent this to all three commissioners and to, um, to you guys as well, uh, the attorneys, um, for, to, to review, um, back in August, I believe it was. Um, and so, yeah, it was sent out back in August. We were actually gonna do it last month, um, but didn't, did not advertise that, so kind of put us here today in October. Um, I, I, Commissioner Brand said that it is, um, kind of one of the first steps that we are looking at with the bond rating, um, and that is to have an investment policy, um, in place, so.
I will take a look. I, I apologize. I kind of lost August, so.
You did. Yep, you did.
I'd make a motion to approve the policy pending final review from our legal counsel.
Second.
We have a motion to approve, uh, the agreement pending legal counsel's review in a second. John, would you call the roll, please?
Sure. Commissioner Rigan.
Yes.
Commissioner Brand.
Yes.
Commissioner Polk.
Yes.
Commissioner Henry.
Yes. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Brand, you have any, or, I'm sorry, Mr. Polk, do you have anything, any other business?
Um, not, not at all, not this time.
Thank you. I entertain a motion for adjournment.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion to adjourn and a second. Roll call, please.
Sure. Mr. Polk.
Yes.
Commissioner Rigan.
Yes.
Commissioner Brand.
Yes.
Mr. Henry.
Yes. We are adjourned. Thank you.
Oh. Yeah.
Okay. Okay, alright. Are we on yet, Marissa? Okay, okay. Stand by here just for a second. We're having some technical issues. We're good? Okay, good morning, everyone. Sorry about that. Um, it's Monday, October twentieth, twenty-twenty-five. Time is, uh, nine oh-one AM. Let's, uh, this is Delaware County Commissioner meeting. Let's open this meeting with the pledge, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which sustains one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, Ed, could you call the roll, please?
Commissioner Rigan.
Present.
Commissioner Brand.
Here.
Commissioner Henry.
Here.
Mr. Brooke.
Here.
Okay, uh, we're still working on some appointments, Board of Health and the Civic Center Authority Board.
Yeah, just a reminder that the Civic Center Authority Board, we're looking for a Republican with legal background. That was a request from the President of the Civic Center Authority Board. And then, uh, little bit of a comment here about the Planning Commission Office. Um, Angie Moyer was the Commissioner's representative on the Technical Advisory Committee and the Transportation Policy Committee, and we want that to be Dean Thomas. So I don't know if we need to take official action to appoint Dean to that or not. Kylene, do we need to?
No, I don't believe you do. That's just a positional appointment, so whoever holds that position will be on our board.
Okay, perfect.
Congratulations, Dean.
Yeah, congratulations, Dean, you're on. Um, nothing for the Board of Health.
Okay, um, got a table of business. We have the BW facility agreement. Keep that on the table.
Leave that on the table, but I would like to revisit it pending the outcome of, uh, the Muncie Recovery O- OPCO LLC contract later on in the meeting.
Okay, um, we have the, uh, tower lease. Okay. And then we have the, um, GAI agreement.
Yeah, I'd like to remove that, please.
Second.
We have a motion to remove that from the table in a second. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Rigan.
Yes.
Commissioner Brand.
Yes.
Commissioner Henry.
Yes. Good, Commissioner Rigan.
Yes, um, the Guardian Advocates were here, and, uh, this is a program where they help the elderly get transportation to go to some of their meetings or doctor's appointments.
I believe the gentleman's at the podium.
Oh, there he is.
Hello?
Yep.
Good morning.
Well, you could explain it. I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Yeah, so we're a five oh-one C-three, uh, organization. Uh, we provide guardianship services, and we operate under the local court, uh, program called VASSIA, Volunteer Advocates for Seniors and Incapacitated Adults. And it's true, we do serve adults, uh, both elderly as well as those with disabilities. And, uh, just in a nutshell, we, uh, provide, uh, staff and volunteers to visit them, to monitor their health care, um, handle their finances and public benefits, and provide basic needs that a family member normally would do, but these are individuals that don't have anyone. Thank you.
In, uh, looking over our Edit Plan, Project Nine has some money under Wellness, and I think this would be a good fit for, um, us to maybe donate up to twenty thousand this year since we might have been a little short last year.
Are you making that a motion?
Yes, I'd like to.
And that's out of Project Nine, is that correct?
Correct.
I'll, I'll second that.
So we have a motion to approve, uh, twenty thousand dollars out of Edit Project Nine and a second. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Rigan.
Yes.
Commissioner Brand.
Yes.
Commissioner Henry.
Yes.
Thank you for your service.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
So you'll need to send an invoice to the auditor's office. Okay.
Thank you.
All right, next we have the, uh, Purdue Extension Contract. This come up last meeting. Um, did everybody, you, you want to remove that from the table?
Make a motion to remove it from the table.
We have a motion to remove.
Second.
And a second. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Brand.
Yes.
Commissioner Rigan.
Yes.
Commissioner Henry.
Yes. Hello.
Good morning.
Um, have you had a chance to review the contract?
I have.
Are there any questions or comments?
Um, I do. Do you have any?
No, go ahead.
Yeah, so, um, this is, I really don't, don't have too many questions. I just want to clarify a couple of things. This is for one year, so you guys come back every year.
Correct.
And this is for provision of services, um, that are highlighted on, uh, on Appendix One, so agricultural production, uh, home economics, family living, uh, board management, leadership and farm management, public affairs, community development, recreation, uh, you assist other university programs of education, research, uh, conduct four-H Club and other work with the youth, uh, give information, advice to producers, distributors, and consumers. You give advice and technical assistance concerning soil fertility and natural resources, and you cooperate with the farmers and the farmers' organizations. Um, this is, uh, in exchange for these services, the county would provide a payment of one hundred thousand, three hundred and forty-five dollars. Now, that's the explanation. Couple of questions. Um, these funds are to be used at the sole discretion of, uh, the university, and, but there's some language in here, uh, maybe a little bit discrepant, or maybe I just don't understand it. Um, your sole discretion allows you, uh, sole, sole discretion over providing the personnel services and picking who those people are. Uh, that's in number two, but number three, um, it says if there is a voluntary departure of personnel, that the parties will meet, meaning Purdue and the county, to, to discuss and mutually agree, uh, that departure. Has that ever happened? Has the county and Purdue ever met? I mean, people turn over in your office, right? So.
Yeah, I'm sorry, what, are you under three of EEO or?
So, under the General Services Agreement.
Okay.
Section three, uh, it starts off saying in the event the county desires additional services, but later on in that same paragraph, it says, um, the government funding for the extension programs for other circumstances, including but not limited to voluntary departure of personnel, providing the services to the county, the parties will meet to discuss and mutually agree upon either a reduction in fees or, I'm assuming, a replacement of the personnel.
Yes, so this, this contract is a bit different than the, the previous, um, contract, um.
I, I don't ever remember a meeting in the past. Sherry, did you?
No.
Do you recall that at all? Yeah, I, I don't remember.
So is this a standard contract you're doing with other counties?
Yes, this is a standard contract that's been provided in all town, ten counties that are part of the pilot pod for, uh, our transformation and reorganization. So, um, we have not met with the county before, but we, uh, do invite county liaisons to serve on our extension board, either from the Commissioner's Office or the County Council. That is something, um, that we welcome a- across the state for, for input and insight.
Does Delaware County have a liaison currently?
From council?
Yeah, from Delaware County Government, council, commissioners.
Not on the extension board currently, no.
Not on the extension board. Might not be a bad idea.
What's, what's the current contract amount?
Uh, the one that was read or last, this year?
Last year.
Uh, three percent less than what was read.
Are there any other questions? Yes.
Part that Commissioner Brand is discussing, uh, actually goes to in the event that the university's unable to provide all the services that they, that they promised to the county, that's when the discussion is to be had, is to personnel and reduction in what the county contributes for this contract. So if they decide that they don't want to do a certain service or have a certain...
Turn your mic on, Jeff.
They don't want to do a certain service, or they don't want to do a certain, um, proj- project or whatever, then the county can have a discussion with them about how much to reduce the county's contribution to the, uh, to the extension service.
I agree with everything you said, and the reason I brought it up was, let's say there's turnover and you're unable to provide the service, then we shall meet, is what it says, so.
Right, and so to clarify that, thank you, Mr. Brooke, uh, if there, if we have turnover in our office, if personnel leaves, this contract doesn't say that we will hire that person. It is that we will provide the service. And so the services are those that are listed in Indiana Code, um, and so that's why they're listed within the contract, because they are codified. Um, and so we will continue to provide the services. It's not saying that we will hire another person for the office.
Gotcha.
Right, if, if there's a person that leaves, then they, they'll rehire someone, but if they, if the person leaves and they decide not to do the service, then that's when the county has a conversation with it.
I understand.
Well, yeah, so with the, with this change in the way we're doing business regionally, this move regionally is, yeah, we won't necessarily rehire that person, but we will provide the service with the current human capital that we have.
Okay. So I think having a county liaison, liaison on the board would be helpful. I don't know if anybody sitting here would like to do that. I don't have the bandwidth, nor do I want to create it, but maybe we could ask the council. And then I would like to, at some point, have a conversation about Purdue's involvement at the fairgrounds and maybe helping run the fair office and do a couple of things out there. So at some point in the future, I'd like to talk to you.
Yeah, they do, like, for the record, though, they are a separate entity, and that is not a, um, that is not something that we do statewide. Those entities have to be self-sustaining.
Yep. Delaware County can be the first.
So you guys attended budget meetings?
Correct, yeah.
Did, did council budget this amount?
They did.
They did.
Okay. I couldn't remember. Is there any other questions?
Well, thank you, Molly.
Yeah.
I would like, Justin's there, and it's time for the Master Gardener Program to start. You have got some dates on the new schooling.
Uh, yeah, anybody who's interested in reaching out for the Master Gardener Program can contact the office. We have a virtual offering coming up, and, um, we will have a face-to-face, uh, program on the books in the coming months, so anybody interested can reach out to the office.
And what's the charge this, for taking that?
Um, it's, it's typically roughly around a hundred and fifty dollars for the fifteen-week course. It's about forty-five hours of education. Um, haven't budgeted yet, but that's where we've fallen historically.
Well, thank you. Thanks for being here today.
I'll entertain a motion for approval?
I'll move.
I'll second. We have a motion to approve and a second. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Brand.
Yes.
Commissioner Rigan.
Yes.
Commissioner Henry.
Yes. Thank you for all your work. We appreciate you guys. Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Next, we have the, uh, approval of the minutes. Commissioner meeting October seventh, twenty-twenty-five. Are there any corrections to those minutes?
I sent a couple this morning early. I apologize for the late, but they were very good. There were only a couple of small corrections, so I would make a motion to approve the minutes with the noted corrections.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Rigan.
Yes.
Commissioner Brand.
Yes.
Commissioner Henry.
Yes. Next, we have, uh, contracts and agreements for approval. We have the Muncie Recovery OPCO LLC.
So this is the, uh, mental health facility that was recently completed, and I think we took ownership of it in the last meeting. Um, what we have in front of us today is, uh, a lease agreement, uh, between, um, what will be the LLC named Muncie Recovery OPCO, but this is part of Indiana Treatment Centers. So the commissioners previously were working with, um, Recovery Solutions, and this Board of Commissioners terminated that agreement, and we've been working for, my goodness, um, maybe about four months now, trying to get this in place. Appreciate all of the work done by Danielle and, uh, Mr. Brooke's office on doing this. So previously, with, uh, Recovery Solutions, the county would have been responsible to, um, recruit, onboard, train the personnel. Um, we would have been responsible for getting patients, uh, and agreements in place from other counties. Um, we would have been responsible for certifying that facility for, uh, Medicaid, and all the billing was going to go through the auditor's office. And even at full capacity, which is forty, irrespective if it was twenty males and twenty females, or forty of each, it was still going to cost the county a pretty good amount of money each year to operate this facility, so that's the reason, uh, we went a different direction. The, uh, lease agreement you have in front of you puts those responsibilities on to, uh, Indiana Treatment Centers. They'll be responsible for running the billing. Once they get possession, which is part of the agreement that you have in your packet today, uh, they'll start the process to get certified by Medicaid. Um, they will recruit and train onboard, uh, all of the personnel, and they will pay us to lease the facility. So this is a fifteen-year lease agreement that you have in front of you with multiple, uh, fifteen-year extensions. You can see that the lease rates, uh, start at seventeen dollars an hour and they, or seventeen dollars per square feet, sorry, and then they escalate, uh, each year through the first fifteen years, and that would, um, end up at twenty-five dollars and seventy-one cents per square foot. And then you'll have options for term, uh, extensions. Basically takes us out to like the year twenty-one twelve or twenty-one thirteen, something like that, if you were to execute all the, all the exten- all the lease extensions. If you only go with the fifteen, it takes us to twenty forty. And, um, I don't know if there's too much else to, uh, to highlight. It's a triple net lease. Uh, the tenant will pay the real estate taxes. That's big improvement. This thing will, will have tax, positive tax dollars, and it's generating positive revenue for the county.
I did notice the future commissioners will be in charge of putting a new roof on things.
Yep, so, yeah.
Which is only fair, getting this kind of money. I would like to suggest on this, on the page one of the payout, the initial terms that we put the year that we start, because... because seventy-five years later, someone down in the auditor's office.
I agree, yeah. And, and there's, uh, I don't, I don't know if it's, uh, Amendment C or D, Sherri, in the back of your packet that has that date on it. That's what we'll have to execute today, and you were talking about the repairs. Um, depending on what the repairs are, in this lease agreement, the landlord will reimburse the tenant for tenants' out-of, out-of-pocket expense incurred in connection with the lease, not to exceed fifty thousand dollars.
Appreciate you working on this.
Yeah, I was skeptical at first, um, but I, I think we, after meeting with, um, individuals several times that we have and, and speaking with them and them touring the facility and, um, I, I think it's a good plan for.
They know what they're doing.
Yeah, it's a good plan for Delaware County. Um, I also appreciate Danielle and, and, uh, John working on this. I know it's taken some time. Um, Stephen, all your work on it, appreciate it, but, um, I, I think it's time to move forward here.
Yeah, and we did visit one of their facilities in Columbus, Indiana, and walk through it and got to see how they operate.
It's good business people. How many states are they in, I believe?
I think, I think six, including their real estate arm.
Entertainer motion for approval?
I'll move.
Second.
A motion to approve this lease agreement and a second, roll call, please.
I do have a question first.
Yes.
In reference to the day of possession, whenever they actually take, take them possession of the property?
That's yet to be determined.
Yeah, so we have certificate of occupancy, and the commissioners took ownership of that in the last meeting, and we're currently getting all the bills switched over into our name, so it'll be the soonest possible date.
Who would determine that and who's going to notify who, so we get this contract fully executed?
The commissioners will determine that with Nelson.
Right.
And communicate it to your office.
That'd be in a, in a meeting, so we put.
Sure.
Okay.
Yep.
All right.
It'll be soon.
Okay. Who made that motion, I'm sorry?
Sherri made the motion. Second by Stephen, roll call, please.
Commissioner Moran?
Yes.
Commissioner Reagan?
Yes.
Commissioner Henry?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. One, one other quick thing I omitted there, um, Nelson and, uh, Indiana Treatment Centers, they're having a presentation for the justice, uh, folks at the Justice Center, and the judges and the prosecutor, I think on the twenty-second of this month? No? Yes? Yeah, twenty-second of this month. So they'll be able to present that information, and we'll invite the sheriff's department as well.
I, I'd like to add then, when they take over, it'll be up to them to have an open house, which I think they probably will.
Agree.
Next, we have, uh, elimination of the current HR, HRA plan. Hello?
Good morning. This is my first time doing this. I apologize.
Yeah, that's fine. Just state your name and your business.
Josh Jarvis, Human Resources.
He's our new HR. Welcome.
So we have, uh, three action plans we would, uh, like for you guys to approve. Uh, first one is the elimination of the current HR plan. Currently, um, we retain a plan design with Imagine Three Sixty, but we would just like to drop the HRA. The current plan designs is requires employees to make a four thousand dollar deductible before benefits are paid. After the deductible, employees pay a ten percent to thirty percent co-insurance, depending on the place of service, until a max of five thousand is reached, including the deductible. Next is the transition from Star HSA to Lively. Uh, I think Lively is also going to give us a debit card to be able to use for our services. And third is the implementation of dependent care, uh, FSA through Lively as well.
Questions, comments? Uh, no, good work on this. Uh, this is, for the commissioners, this is part of the continuing transition from Apex to McGriff. Um, Apex was charged as five dollars per employee per month for this HSA plan. This will eliminate that, so this will further cement part of the savings that we were already talking about. And we're being asked to approve these actions today to, uh, go eliminate the Star HSA, go to Lively, and then approve, uh, I talked about it in our staff meeting last week, a dependent care flexible spending account. So that is not an option currently available for county employees, and this will put a dependent care flexible spending account option in place. So if somebody knows that they pay X amount of dollars every month for, uh, you know, childcare or even elder care, you can forecast that, put it in your flexible spending account. It lowers your taxable wages, and then you'll pay lower taxes on this. So I think it's a nice benefit addition for the county employees.
Any questions, comments?
No. You want to lump all three of them together?
I, I do. I'd make a motion to approve the action to eliminate the current HRA plan with Star, to transition to the new HSA plan to Lively, and to implement a dependent care flexible spending account through Lively.
Second.
Did you get all that, Ed?
Yep.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Brand?
Yes.
Commissioner Reagan?
Yes.
Commissioner Henry?
Yes, I'm, I'm okay with this, but I, I, you, you guys, HR has to go on the road and make sure all the employees are fully aware of what these changes are to their, to their policy.
We have it set up for them to visit, uh, all the locations on a, on a given day. We will also be there to assist as well. Uh, I sent out a newsletter as well, and an email blast, I'll continue to do on a monthly basis, but they will be more than educated, um, on the events coming up.
And if they can't make maybe their individual meeting, they can go to another site.
Correct. It, it's constant communication throughout this.
Or, or just come to your office if they need to.
Correct.
So we want to make sure all the employees are, are aware. If, if you can't make a meeting, you can, go, go see these guys. They'll, they'll help you, so.
I do have a question or maybe a statement. I assume you've already talked to the treasurer about the Star account, of closing it and transferring the money?
We have not until we get this approved. So that's the next step. We'll have to talk to the treasurer about moving that money.
So when will this become effective, then?
Um, probably by the end of the day today.
Is Brad's, Brad's here?
Yeah.
Will that be an issue, Brad? Could you go up to podium, please?
Okay, so, to, uh, we can close the account, we just have to open, we'd have to open a new one. I don't know how long that would take us.
Okay, well, we can delay the transition until we get a new account open.
Yeah, we just have to open that. We have somewhere to, have to have somewhere to put it, so that new account would have to be open before we close the old one.
Okay, but you don't see an issue?
It shouldn't be.
Okay.
No, not at all.
All right.
Thank you.
Is that, is that good, good for you, Ed?
Yeah.
Okay.
And McGriff will be involved in those employee meetings. They'll be in-person, education meetings prior to the open enrollment. Uh, how enrollment will take place, explain the benefits at each location, and have multiple, and they're going to have a PowerPoint with a handout and a benefit guide for the employees.
Very good. Thank you, guys.
Thanks.
We have asphalt materials, uh, looks like Carrie?
Good morning.
Good morning.
So I submitted, uh, an extension on our twenty-twenty-five contract for our liquid, um, asphalt. That is the tack or the emulsion that's put down with chip and sealing, um, in our paving operation. Um, our current rate for twenty-twenty-five was two sixty-six a gallon. Nate did come in halfway through the year, and they lowered that rate to two sixty. Um, he would like to extend that on into the twenty-twenty-six con- construction season.
The two dollars and sixty cents.
Correct.
Yeah.
I'm all in favor of that.
So are we.
Yeah. We have a motion to approve this agreement, asphalt materials?
So moved.
Thank you.
A motion to approve the agreement and a second, roll call, please.
Commissioner Reagan?
Yes.
Commissioner Brand?
Yes.
Commissioner Henry?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have, uh, lean assists program master's agreement, Mr. Carroll?
Yes. So, our office has been working with the treasurer's office for a few months now. In reference to a program that's available to us, essentially, we're to resolve a lot of issues concerning, uh, liens that are put on the taxes. And this program actually, uh, the way it's designed and built, will eliminate, uh, pretty much all the issues that we've had in the past concerning people making payments, and we've got representatives from the company here with SRI that provides that service. They can go into more detail of how that program works. But essentially, this program is not going to cost the county any money eventually. Um, there will be a five-dollar fee, but we're going to, uh, request an ordinance to be created, so that will be covered by the actual pay, um, lien holder. So, uh, I'll let Brad speak a little bit about it, because he, he experiences a lot of the issues that we have in our office, uh, on the fine, collecting the money side. We have to fill all the, uh, liens on the parcels. There's roughly somewhere between fifteen hundred and two thousand liens a year that we actually put on the tax rolls. So it's a lot of time and effort, and there's a lot of payments that are made by taxpayers to, to get those caught up. And with the system, it makes, it streamlines the process, and everybody's on the same page, so all the information's the same location. So I'll let them speak more about it also.
Okay, so, Brad Holt, County Treasurer. Yes, we, we, um, attended an SRI, um, training event back in February. Um, they spoke about this. Um, it's something that we've been kind of working on, um, with SRI and the auditor's office. Um, it does, like Ed said, it does clean up the liens quite a bit for our office, as well as the auditor's office. Um, SRI will do a lot, probably ninety-five percent of the work as far as tracking the liens, sending out notice, notifications, those kind of things. We had a meeting, two months ago? Two months ago with, um, all the, um, municipalities that this would, uh, impact as far as Muncie Sanitary, the building commissioner from the city of Muncie, as well as all the towns, um, and their, um, like, for sewage liens and, and things like that. And so, um, they were all very excited about the ease of it. And so with, with that, I can let Chad from SRI, Chad Malco, um, speak, uh, a little more about the SRI Lean Assist Program, so.
I'll be happy to get deep, Chad Malco, SRI Services. I'll be happy to get deep into the woods, but I'll kind of give you the ten-thousand-foot view. So basically, the way the process would work is the municipality or, or, uh, district would enter the lien into our software system, and then we pick up the ball and run with it from there. We take it all the way through the recorder's office, get the process lien. Everything is on the same system, so they're all operating off of the same software system. So that is where some of the big issues have been, where municipalities use A, county uses Y. There's a lot of data entry involved, which when there's a bunch of data entry, that just opens up for potential human error issues along the way. So what happens is that municipality or district will enter that, um, lien into the system. SRI will process it all the way through the noticing, all the way through the failure to pay, and sent to the recorder's office to actually record the lien and take care of that. Everything is contained in one software system, so the county knows exactly what's going on at the same time. It's all real time, so the county, the municipality, the solid waste manager districts, all of them know exactly what is going on at the same time. There's nobody out of the loop. Um, a couple other nice things is, should you ever need to go to court, everything is at your fingertips. All the documentation, all the soft, all, the software contains all the documentation, as well as all the mailing information, all the signatures, all the things that's been processed. So it's there for the usage of, if you, if those municipalities do need to go to court to process these liens. Um, in addition, another nice thing, and I know you guys had some issues in the past, we have the ability to, uh, so it's, liens are confusing, because let's say the lien gets paid in January, but the tre- the treasurer's office doesn't do settlement until June. So the municipality actually doesn't get paid till June, but the person who had the lien sells their house in February. Well, the lien's still on the recorder's office, because it can't get removed until the municipality is paid, and that doesn't happen till June. We have the ability in our software to provide documentation, so that the title companies will still issue title, that title insurance, because they can, we can prove that the lien has been satisfied, it just has not been paid out by the county because of the way the settlements work with, with the counties. So happy to answer any questions. That's kind of the ten-thousand-foot view of it all, but happy to answer any, as Ed says, there is a fee, it's a five-dollar fee, but that fee would be, we recommend that that fee just be added on to the cost of the lien, just like you guys already add, the cost of the recordings, the cost of the mailing. All of those fees are already added on. This would just be in addition to that. And it's, again, only five dollars. And in the grand scheme of things, that's a, that's probably single digits on any liens that would ever be priced. Happy to answer any questions you guys might have.
John, are you, um?
I've had a chance to look at this. One question I do have is, and I know this has been a perpetual problem in the auditor's office, is liens are paid directly to the lien holder sometimes, whether it's the sanitary district, or the, or the towns, or somebody else. Um, and that creates problems for the auditor's office, and I've had to send out letters to those different departments that are accepting the payments directly. Does this affect or does it have any impact on, on that process?
So the, the, again, they should not take the payment at all, because it should come through the treasurer's office. So they should instruct them, again, to go to the treasurer's office. And I think by putting everybody on the same page and putting everybody in the same system, which, like Ed mentioned, we have several of those folks, including Muncie, Muncie Sanitary District. Several have already signed up. They're in the works with their contracts as well. They're very interested. Selma passed it in their town board here recently. We've had several that have already signed up. So I think by putting everybody on the same page and on the same system, that will reduce that issue. Um, and if they did take a payment, they could also mark it paid in the system in their side. Now, again, they shouldn't, because they'd have to send the money up to the county, and it's, it makes it a mess on that backend. But, yeah, it, it at least puts everybody in the same system, and everything is active and live, so there is no potential lost in the shuffle kind of thing.
And John, you are correct. I mean, it's, that's a real pain. I know you spent a lot of time over the last four, five years working on this thing. And that was one of the things that was attractive about this, because it really takes those issues and puts, it really addresses that issue upfront, so that everybody knows who's paid and who hasn't, so.
Yeah, everybody was on the same page before, they just chose to ignore it.
Yeah.
Hopefully, by having everybody driven to the same software system, that will make it a lot, lot better.
How many years has this program been out there, and how many counties are?
So, we, we have been doing this for a few years now. We have several counties that have already on it, but, uh, this is a newer program, because we, SRI has historically been in the real estate side. We've done the tax sales, sheriff's sales, deed sales. We've been doing that for decades. Uh, we do that in over eighty-six counties in the state. Um, but the Lean Assist is a newer program. That's why we introduced it at this year's, we, we've tested it in some other counties over the past couple of years. We introduced it at this year's, uh, conference that we hold every year. And so now we have several counties that are signing up, because they see the advantage to it, and, you know, basically streamlining the process and getting everybody on the same page. It saves a lot of manpower, not as much on the county side as it does on the municipality side, because it's, it's quite a process to process a lien. I don't know how familiar y'all are with it, but it's, it takes a lot to take it all the way over to Jan's office to get it recorded. So there's quite a process involved, a lot of notifications, a lot of mailings, a lot of scannings. All that is done seamlessly and outside of our software through us, so that makes it nice on them.
Thank you.
Yes, anytime.
Sounds like a pretty good deal, only five dollars.
So, there's a beginning date called out here in section two, timing and performance. Is this an annual contract? So this will, you come back to us every year to ask for this to be?
Well, it's an automatically renewable contract. I mean, we can make it an annual contract if that's a preferable thing. We can definitely do that.
Yeah, I despise auto renewals.
Sure.
Yeah.
Okay, is, and, and then we have, I guess this is a sample agreement in front of us?
Yes, that is just our sample agreement, so that, the, we brought forth to, to, uh, you know, that was requested by the auditor and treasurer to bring our, that's our sample. That's our, kind of our standard contract, if you will. Um, if you wanted to make an adjustment, we're happy to talk about that.
Yeah, well, I'd like to see, instead of city of Martinsville, I'd like to see county of Delaware. Instead of the word city, I'd like to see county.
Yeah, we could definitely, again, that would definitely would, this is, this is the sample where we would finalize the contract with the, with obviously your correct.
Well, I, I, I think you should prepare an agreement with Delaware County, and then let's review again next meeting.
Let's table this. I move to table it.
A couple of quick questions, so I know Danielle had sent back some questions. Were, were those answered? A couple of quick questions. So I know Danielle had sent back some questions. Were those answered?
Response with example agreement that it said, I want anyone to then answer questions.
There are actually two agreements here. One is a match agreement. One is an addendum.
Correct. So we have a motion to table. Did you, did you second that?
I haven't yet. And this will require an ordinance, correct?
We're going to propose an ordinance so that the fees will be charged to the.
Be charged to the, to the, okay, yeah. I'll second table.
So would you like us to come back with the, prepare the contract, send it over and then come back for your next meeting?
Correct.
Yes, thank you.
I can do that.
We have a motion to table in a second. Roll call please.
Mr. Brand.
Yes.
Mr. Reagan.
Yes.
Mr. Henry.
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Next, we have ordinances for first reading. We have ordinance number twenty twenty-five dash twenty-three range fees.
So this is a follow-up. Andy Payne was here at the last meeting to ask us to approve range fees, which we did. And now it's just being memorialized in the form of an ordinance. Or in its twenty twenty-five dash zero twenty-three, it's a two-tiered ordinance for the range fees. Basically, tier one is anybody inside the county, any agency inside the county, including the State Police, the Department of Natural Resource Officers, or any federal agencies that are going to provide any specialized training to our departments. The cost to use this range will be zero dollars. Tier two, which would charge entities outside of Delaware County, that cost would be a hundred dollars per day. And we approved that at our last meeting. So this is just to memorialize the action that we took in our previous meeting.
Sheriff, have you reviewed this? Do we have a motion to introduce?
So moved.
We have a motion to introduce this ordinance in a second. Roll call please.
Mr. Brand.
Yes.
Mr. Reagan.
Yes.
Mr. Henry.
Yes. Thank you. Next, we have ordinance twenty twenty-five dash twenty-four. It's pond ordinance. Kylene.
Good morning. Kylene Swat Chambering Plan Commission. So multiple years ago, a group worked on creating a pond ordinance. That work was never finalized. Year or so ago, we revisited that. We got a group together, had some meetings, looked at the previous research and information gathering that was done on that project, and we completed a pond ordinance. So the purpose of this is basically to regulate safe development of ponds in our area. It was made in the interest of protecting public health and prosperity of the properties involved, environmental preservation and erosion control. So we did provide you with that ordinance. It does address setbacks, depth, vegetation, maintenance, decommissioning, fees, permits, approval, inspections, enforcement and penalties, any appeal processes. It addresses pre-existing ponds and any abatement.
Does anyone have any questions?
So I know this is for introduction today and any existing ponds will be grandfathered in, right?
Yes, so it does say in there that any pre-existing ponds would basically be that legally non-conforming, what people call grandfathered. Any changes to an existing pond would then need to follow this ordinance. And the maintenance of any existing ponds would need to follow this ordinance.
And a decommissioning?
Yes.
Make a motion.
Sherry, do you have any questions?
I did have a question on page five under section one or three permit processing. You mentioned the storm water management. We really don't have a storm water management, so.
That was, so Muncie Sanitary District was involved in the formation of this. We did have Courtney Pruitt, who is the storm water management personnel over there. So she was involved in this. And she will continue to be involved in the inspections and authorization of any permits for ponds.
And the county and the sanitary district follow the same MS four program?
Yeah. Yeah, I forgot about that.
So this has been something I wanted for quite some time. I know you're right. We worked with Marta. I worked with Marta a little bit on this prior to COVID and then COVID happened. And then solar happened at the same time. And solar pushed this ordinance, this work on this ordinance back. So you guys got everyone back together. I greatly appreciate all your work on this in your office. I know Elizabeth Wilcox worked very hard on this and I greatly appreciate all your hard work on this. Cause I know it was a lot. I did attend a few of these meetings and I think you had a good group that discussed this ordinance, so.
Yeah, we involved our staff. The Building Commissioner was involved. We had Tom Borchers, County Surveyor, involved. We had asked some questions of Purdue Extension. Jeremy Pettigrew from the Health Department was involved. Commissioner Brand, Commissioner Henry, both of you were involved. So yeah, we, we kind of had groups with expertise from those different areas that will deal with these issues.
Well, thank you for getting it done. I appreciate it. Thank you, Sol Cox.
Yeah, you were, you were actually the one that brought it up to us again and said, hey, you guys get back on this. And you sat on the plan commission at that time and they, several of those members agreed as well that this was needed in the area.
Absolutely. Chuck Whitehair, funny story, Chuck Whitehair is deceased now. He, he would call me. He did a lot of tile work for farmers. And he'd call me and it seemed like it was always on meeting days and I would go out and meet him at a field. And I'd be dressed in a suit or dressed in a shirt and tie and he would put me on his side by side and take me through the muddy field, flipping mud everywhere, going to look at these issues that were created by ponds. So that's kind of what started this whole thing. But thank you anyway.
One, one other thing, we did turn this into Plan Commission Attorney. Brandon Murphy has looked over this. He didn't have any comments or concerns. And then so now we've also turned it in to you for John Burke to look over as well, so.
I didn't have any comments or concerns either.
Okay. So do we have a motion to introduce?
So move.
Second.
We have a motion to introduce this ordinance in a second. Roll call please.
Commissioner Brand.
Yes.
Commissioner Reagan.
Yes.
Mr. Henry.
Absolutely. Yes. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Okay, next we have resolutions for approval, resolution number twenty twenty-five dash one eight A.
This is an amendment to a resolution that was adopted last meeting. I needed to make a change to the recipient of the property up there, that point two two nine acres of ground that goes to East Central Indiana Regional Planning District. I think I had the incorrect name in the one before, so I'm just correcting the record on this one.
We approve this.
Yes, this was all approved. I just.
You have a name change. Do I have a motion for approval?
Second.
We have a motion to approve in a second.
I would suggest something on the resolution that the date on the back be changed from September to October.
I could do that.
Got it, John.
Yep, I could do that.
A motion to approve in a second. Roll call please.
Commissioner Brand.
Yes.
Commissioner Reagan.
Yes.
Mr. Henry.
Yes. And next we have twenty twenty-five dash twenty-one A, work to be performed by Highway Department.
This is an amendment. This is for the work on McGayard. I received some updated numbers from Commissioner Brand as to the cost of the materials and the equipment and whatnot. So it changed some of the numbers. The intent is still the same that the county is going to work in conjunction with the City of Muncie. Muncie's going to pay for half the cost of the materials. But this just changed some of the numbers, so I thought it'd be appropriate to have an amended ordinance or amended resolution, I mean.
Yeah, so the work's complete and so the estimate before, and these are the actuals, so that's the purpose of amending it. So the asphalt amount increased from nine hundred tons to one thousand one hundred nineteen tons. The amount of tack that we put down was originally estimated eight hundred gallons, but then when we had a pre-construction meeting, we agreed to put the tack down heavier since this, we were trying to get this through until twenty twenty-seven, until the full depth restoration can take place. So that tack went from eight hundred gallons to nine hundred fifty-five gallons. And then we helped haul off the millings and there was an increase in the number of trucks. We originally estimated four or two, I think, and we went to four trucks on Monday and five on Tuesday to help get this done. So just some differences between estimated and actual. And then the city will be invoiced for fifty percent of materials totaling. The invoice going to the city will be forty thousand nine hundred sixty-one dollars and thirty-nine cents.
You entertain a motion for approval?
So moved.
Second.
A motion to approve in a second. Roll call please.
Commissioner Brand.
Yes.
Mr. Reagan.
Yes.
Mr. Henry.
Yes. Next is twenty twenty-five dash twenty-two.
This is a resolution to transfer the property at six thirteen North Broadway. This is something that the Commissioners discussed and Albany was requesting. It's a burned out building in Albany that's been that way for many years. It was in the deed sale. We've been able to get an order from the court transferring the property to the county. I think that we've asked the Auditor's Office for a, for a deed. And once it's, once the deed is received, then all Delaware County could transfer to Albany and then they could try and tear this down for the citizens. There would have to be a corresponding resolution that is adopted by Albany. I've already sent that to Albany for them to consider at their next meeting once we, if you approve this one.
Yeah, this, you're right. This house burnt down three or four years ago. The top of it burned off and it's sitting there and it's all open and first floor still remains and it's, it's quite a big mess there that needs removed.
I believe it actually caught on fire at least one additional time after it burned the first time. And we approved this action in the last meeting, so this is memorializing what we approved.
Motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
A motion to approve it in a second. Roll call please.
Commissioner Reagan.
Yes.
Commissioner Brand.
Yes.
Mr. Henry.
Yes, thank you. Next, we have twenty twenty-five dash twenty-three, review of approval of updated insurance rates.
So part of the moving from Apex to McGriff and trying to modernize our healthcare plan, the Insurance Committee had met a number of times with Apex and McGriff and others. And it was decided that after at least ten years of a no increase in premiums for the employees, while costs did go up and the county paid for those costs, it was decided to change that, change that amount that the employees pay. So this has two grids on it. One is a standard grid like the employees would be used to seeing in the past, but there's another one on here called non-wellness. So we're going to start everybody out on the wellness grid, which is an increase. And then if they don't get their basic healthcare screening, including a free physical in the first hundred and twenty days, they'll move to the second tier, which is about sixty dollars more per month for each of the plan, tiered plan levels. This again is further to making those changes from Apex to McGriff. One other thing to note, there will be twenty-six pays in twenty twenty-six where there's twenty-seven pays in twenty twenty-five. So it makes it look like it's a, it is an increase, but it makes it look bigger because, because of the one, one less pay.
Any questions, comments?
I'd love to read them.
I'll second.
A motion to approve in a second. Roll call please.
Commissioner Reagan.
Yes.
Commissioner Brand.
Yes.
Mr. Henry.
Yes. Again, HR, we need to make sure the employees are fully aware of what's happening here. Okay? Department heads or elected officials?
Morning Commissioners, John Coutino, Emergency Management Director. I spoke with Dan White at the Fairgrounds and he has a couple of vehicles and equipment that he'd like to be put on the GovDeals website. But I think they need to be approved or as surplus from you guys to do that. It's a duly and a tractor.
So we're planning to have an auction, a joint auction between the county and the city. The city, I'm waiting on the mayor to give me a couple of names of people on their side that they want to be involved in, and then I'll schedule some meetings between the county and the city and we'll include those vehicles in that auction. I think the Sheriff's Department has some vehicles, the Highway Department has some assets, so we're going to have an, we're going to.
Is it going to be sooner than later? Cause I think Dan's wanting to get rid of them, right?
Yeah.
That's kind of the deal.
Does he just want them out of his way?
Yeah, I think they're in the, in the barn right now. The tractor I know needs air in the tires. I don't think it runs. The duly is just kind of a hot mess as well, so.
I can, I can work with. This is a way of getting stuff picked up and removed.
Yeah, we can get them out of the way in the meantime. We can relocate them to the Highway Department or something. I do have Jenna looking as well and Dan's going to look as well for the title for the truck. I'm not sure where that's at, if she's got it or if he does, but the tractor I think was a donation years ago, so.
And that tractor, I think we, we talked about maybe giving it to the Maintenance Department, to Don Chambers' group and let them mow out at the Justice Center with it. There's a five foot, five foot bush hog out there. The tractor that we have at the Justice Center overheats, has a couple of water leaks, maybe even a crack in the head or the block. I don't think we've troubleshoot it to the extent that we would know exactly where that crack is, but I think the tractor, we're going to move to the.
I thought we've already got that tractor still there.
Red tractor still counted though. Blue tractor, we still need to get a rim for.
Right. And move it. Yeah.
Let's try.
We'll get them out of his way.
Okay.
We'll get them out of his way.
I'll let them out. Thank you.
A quick question for you while you're up there. The burn ban that we put in place, I think it was the seventeenth of September, has that been lifted?
I think, was that set to expire the end of September or?
It was set to expire because under the rules for emergency bans, they're only allowed to be in place for fourteen days.
Okay.
Yeah, so I think that did expire.
It was set to expire on the thirtieth.
The thirtieth.
The fire chiefs contacted me on the twenty-sixth and started asking questions about letting it expire. But I never did hear back on what they decided.
Yeah, same with me. I think we'd gotten some rain and they were comfortable. I don't think we had very many fires, fortunately, so I think we were good, but.
Couple combine fires.
Yeah, a couple that, I did hear one the other day, so.
I just want the public to know that it's lifted.
Yep, it is lifted. Correct.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning, Don Chambers, Superintendent of Maintenance. Want to talk about a couple of issues that's going on at the County Jail. We have a domestic hot water heater for the hot water for your hands and stuff. One of them, there's only two of them, two lock and boiler boilers, and one of them is down. And that's the, the price is forty-seven fifty for a brand new pump. And then the second price is eight thousand nine hundred and sixty-five dollars for one boiler motor to be rebuilt and reinstalled, and that's for the hot water system. Then we have another one that just went down Friday, so we don't even have any idea what's wrong with that one yet, so. But they, Resolve Tech said if we use, if we take the motor and take it to Motorcraft where we have a account there, it'd be like two grand cheaper just put it on our account. So I mean, just whatever's cheapest possible way we can get it done. But I know it needs done before winter time, so.
Yeah.
But I don't know if two boilers is going to run that whole entire building for heat for the, as big as that building is.
Probably not. We need to get it repaired and I believe we still have some money in the maintenance and repair line at the Justice Center. And if we don't, then we'll move to exhausting the edit funds that we put in place for these types of repairs. So you can work with Jenna to find out what's left in the Justice Center Maintenance and Repair Line item.
So is there, do I hear a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Both fixes, correct?
Yep. And, well, and the two that are in front of us, and there's a third one that just went down, so that's the motor.
Yeah, and, and they haven't even looked at it yet. They think they might be able to fix it when they start coming, doing the maintenance to the boilers for the summertime or for the wintertime, I mean. They might be able to fix it then, but we'll know more once they start getting into it.
So approve the two in front of us.
Yes.
Yeah.
Roll call please.
Commissioner Brand.
Yes.
Commissioner Reagan.
Yes.
Mr. Henry.
Yes, thank you. Any other department heads or elected officials? We have our October Waits and Measures Report. We have our October Waits and Measures Report. Does anyone have any questions of our Waits and Measures?
No questions about the report, but we're still working on, you're going to make recommendations on revising the fees and the penalties that we can charge?
He has, he sent that to us. We're drafting an ordinance.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have the uh, payment of claims of one million, six hundred thirty thousand, six hundred thirty dollars and thirty eight cents.
So move.
We have a motion to pay the claims.
I'll second. Can we have some discussion?
Let's have some discussion.
Thank you. So uh, wheel tax collections there, two hundred twenty two thousand, one hundred seventy four dollars and sixty eight cents. That's distributed to the towns in the uh, the city of Muncie and the county. Tax redemption of twenty seven thousand uh, eight hundred and forty four dollars and twelve cents. Tax surplus, one hundred fifty three thousand, two hundred forty two dollars and thirty cents. And drainage maintenance of thirteen thousand, one hundred forty seven dollars and forty three cents. Um, credit card, uh, still no explanations. I will not be approving the claims today as a result of that. And um, there were some invoices on there for Stryker, S T R Y K E R. Pretty good size amount, two hundred and thirty one dol- two hundred and thirty one thousand, six hundred and thirty six dollars and sixty nine cents. I don't know if there's latency in those bills. I put it on top.
It's right here.
Yeah.
Um, I've been working with, with, Mike, you want to go to the podium?
For that, um, I don't have the amounts right in front of me, but the hundred and forty some thousand dollar one was the three year service agreement with Stryker for all of our equipment. It's good for the next three years.
Explain what Stryker is, please.
I'm sorry, Stryker's our um, um, medical equipment company. Everything from cots, heart monitors, uh, load systems, get some medical supplies there, um, all the, all the big stuff.
It's a very important part of EMS.
Yeah.
Stryker is, that co- that company.
Yeah, so the service agreement covers everything, like our load systems, our cots, batteries, heart monitors, all that stuff. They come fix it, they, they come out twice a year to to service everything, to inspect everything, hook everything up to their computers. It helps us on liability. If something should fail, we can prove that we did our end for preventative maintenance and stuff on all the equipment and stuff. This stuff does break.
So that explains a hundred and forty seven thousand of it, but there's around ninety thousand.
Those are from uh, payments last year that got messed up with the Stryker company. They'd end up sending the, the money back. There was some people fired over it. It was a big mess. Uh, part of that was for the uh, a load system and a cot. So that money was reappropriated back in August. Just now got re- just, just now it's getting fixed up.
August of this year?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so there's nothing, nothing from twenty twenty four?
Well, those, those uh, the eighty thousand dollars is technically from twenty twenty four, but the money went back into our capital improvements account. We've been fighting back and forth with Stryker all summer. And then I finally got it straightened out and uh, got it reappropriated in August. It's just now getting paid.
Gotcha. So we did encumber it in a way by putting.
In a way, yeah, it came back to our account.
Okay.
Yep. It, it's out of the capital improvements account, not out of the general fund.
So we worked with Tanya last week and um, Tanya and the office helped get
Mm-hmm.
things moving in the right direction.
Yep.
So we should be good now from this point forward, correct? Okay.
Hope so.
All right.
So I didn't sign that claim because I didn't understand it, but I will sign it.
No, I don't think Sherry signed that one either. Sherry, are you willing to sign that?
I'll sign it.
Anything else?
Thank you, Mike.
Okay.
Others, Commissioner Brand?
No, thank you.
I, I want to say this with, with the credit cards. I, I don't want to, I don't want to get in the weeds on this. Uh, um, I know Commissioner Brand, you're, you, you get in the weeds and I'm, I'm good with that, right? I'm good with that. But the, these credit cards are, and and I think Sherry would, will agree also, these credit cards are a little bit out of control. And all we get, we have thirteen pages. Technically, there's nine pages here, and I'll just show everyone. There's nine pages here of credit card payments. And we have no idea what they are. They just say credit card, um, and have the credit card number.
And I think it's all up to every department that turns in their claims to put some description.
Tanya Dunsmore, Chief Deputy Auditor. Um, I have not reviewed specifically what the departments put on theirs. However, I'm sure many of them do put more details on theirs. But what happens is, is our claims deputy takes all those payments and puts them into one. So there's no way for her to put a description on there of details for each and every department based on the fact she pays it in like one lump sum. Now, she could start putting, I talked to Mr. Brand about this the la- I don't know, a few meetings ago, I brought it up. Um, she said, you're more than welcome to come down and see what she does, how she does it in order for you to view it and maybe, you know, give a suggestion of what you would like.
There, there's got to be a description on here. There's nothing on here.
Well, I mean, you want her to put the months that it's for, you know, like the date to date.
I want to know what, what it's for.
How, it's not her responsibility. The, the
No, but.
Go to the department or does it come direct to you?
It, it goes into the system and then, or no, I'm sorry, credit cards are different. Am I right, Jenna? From my department? It um, just goes to, do you guys?
Get the email.
That's what I was thinking. That's why I was thinking, sorry. Uh, everything else goes in the system, but they email it and then Tammy, our claims deputy, does one lump sum payment. So how is it that you want her to put a description for every single department who's going to have many descriptions?
I'm just telling you, I'm not going to sign this any longer. This is my last day of signing this. And because I, you know, there's a credit card payment in here and I'm sure it might have been several different things, but it's, it's over three thousand dollars. And I'm not going to sign.
Can I speak for a minute?
The most.
Go ahead. So last year, I brought this up to the commissioners and we actually passed ordinance in reference to the credit card, all the transactions.
Mm-hmm.
And the reason I brought it up because we were over our credit dilemma. Remember that?
Yeah, yeah.
Use it?
Hmm.
So the issue is that when you use a credit card, that's the most information you're going to be able to get, the most detailed information you can get. So the suggestion was to start using uh, the claims process that we have in place to make and purchase from those vendors directly instead of using a credit card to make the purchases. So as long as you use credit cards, that's the most information you can get of them. That's my line.
Was the ordinance approved?
So you're, you're, you're paying, you're paying this and you're not seeing what they've charged?
Oh, we see that the actual, we got the receipts along with their claim and everything. The problem is when you make, make a payment, the credit card or the vendor is the credit card company, not the actual vendor. So you don't get the information of the vendors, which has the receipts, the university on the claim.
Yeah.
So in this case, the vendor is the credit card company, so all you see is a payment made for all of those, those particular departments.
So you guys can see it? How can we see it is what I'm asking you. You, you, you guys are asking us to sign for fifty some thousand dollars?
The only thing we could.
I need to see it.
You can see it if they put, file it as a claim. That's the reason I brought it to you last year.
And they quit doing that.
They quit using their credit card. I mean, there's other counties that only have two credit cards for the whole county. So we're very liberal when it comes to our user credit card.
Maybe we need to talk.
And now we're very liberal in how we use the credit card. So it's not just departments, but we, we, we pay utilities out of credit cards.
I, I understand.
So.
But, but like I said, you're.
That's the solution.
You, you guys want, want us to sign? And, and what I'm saying, not, not just you, but the, this whole county wants us to sign for fifty four thousand dollars. I don't know why I'm signing for.
In the meantime, would you want us?
Completely agree with your, your position. I'm upset.
Mm-hmm.
So that was my concern last year.
So some, someone's got to figure out in the next two weeks how we can see these or I'm not signing for them. I'm, I'm telling everybody.
In the meantime, would you like us to provide a copy of the claim form that the departments fill out?
Absolutely.
Explaining what it's for.
Yep.
They also turn in um, proof of, proof of uh, invoices and such, you know what I mean? If you go to a hotel, it's the hotel invoice, et cetera.
Yeah.
Um, you know, that's going to be too much.
Mm-hmm.
However, as long as they put a good description on their claim form, then we could provide a copy of those in addition to that.
That would be perfect.
And that's about the only thing I know that suggests.
That's perfect.
It's a lot of paperwork, but.
I, I, I get it, but.
Reran having all the information come through our office. Should we just have the department's email you again to the claims? I mean, there's no, no reason to have us be involved in claims if our claims person doesn't get to you in time.
Um.
I mean, it's.
Do they email them to you?
No, they, they actually are scanned in to prove, but sometimes they're, they're emailed, but.
Yeah.
Um, my point being that I don't want our office to be involved in that kind of operation.
Let's, let's, let's try it, see if it works. Let's try it the next two weeks and see if it works. Email them to us and then we'll have to flag them or something so you know in two weeks when we get this, we get this print out, we can go through our emails then and we'll have to check.
If that's the.
Why don't you send them, let's do that. Let's send them to Jenna. And Jenna, you, you file those for us. How about that?
Like.
Oh, we'll try it.
On thirsty to.
And, and when we sign these, you provide a folder with those in them. Cause I, I want to know what I'm signing for.
I mean, it's getting ridiculous.
Yeah.
That's fine on our end as well. However, I would just um, I need to reiterate the fact that they still need to follow the procedure of sending it to the auditor in full as well.
Absolutely. Hundred percent. Hundred percent agree.
Thank you for supporting.
Thank you.
Yeah.
President Henry, and I'll tell you what, what I expect to see is we'll find out that there are charges on credit cards that should be run through the claims process. And there are going to be charges on the credit card that maybe are not able to run through the claims process. But I think we're going to find out that a lot of this stuff should be running through the claims process.
I don't disagree. Thank you.
Yeah.
Okay, so we have a motion to pay.
If I may.
I'm sorry, go ahead, Tanya. Yes.
Um, Carrie Die with the Highway, she used to work in the auditor's office and in fact, she used to do claims. She has an idea that um, I think would probably work. I would need to talk to um, Kita and Tammy and Ed, of course, you know, we'd need to go over it. But her idea was just have a, we have what's called like a departmental date where everyone has to have their claims in by a certain date. They use that date as their payday, et cetera, for it to go into the system. And then our department pulls those and, you know, uh, goes from there with the payments. She stated that if we had one due date for everyone in the county to have theirs in by and use that one day each month um, as like a separate batch per se uh, for the credit cards, then everybody could enter it in the system, just like they do their other claims. And then our department could pull those as a one payment process. I think it might work. The only thing is, is going by a date rather than a day. The date might fall on the same day as a regular like departmental date. You see what I'm saying?
It puts everything back on the department, not on the auditor.
So it's an idea.
That's perfect.
Think, think about it, yeah.
I do like the idea.
See if it works. See what you think.
Ed and I'll discuss it with the claims.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we have a motion and we have a second.
Yep.
Roll call, Ed.
Commissioner Brand.
No.
Commissioner Rigan.
Yes.
Commissioner Henry.
Yes. Next, we have the pain, oh, no, we don't have any um, well, yes, we do. Do we, is this uh, final BW dispersment, two hundred fifty four thousand, five hundred ninety
Yeah.
thirty seven. That was on our.
It was, it was in there.
Yeah.
It sure was.
So that is a, that is a our claim. It's the final BW construction dispersment.
Two hundred fifty four thousand, five hundred ninety dollars and thirty seven cents, motion to approve.
Second.
A motion to approve that claim in a second. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Rigan.
Yes.
Commissioner Brand.
Yes.
Commissioner Henry.
Yes. And we have the payment of payroll, uh, an amount of one million, eighteen thousand, seven hundred and sixty six dollars and forty four cents.
So move.
Second.
Motion to pay payroll in a second. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Brand.
Yes.
Commissioner Rigan.
Yes.
Commissioner Henry.
Yes. Okay, we have um, person signed up here, Mike Katron?
Turn your mic on, please. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Mike Katron, one thousand East County Road, seven hundred north, Muncie, four seven three oh three. Like to start out thanking Sherry for trying to help with the ordinance at the last meeting. It was appreciated. Um, two days after the ordinance was passed, I received a call from Geronimo that they owed six million dollars in fees to PJM in October to continue. They've chose not to continue. The project at Rorton is canceled. Um, and in lieu of that, we are personally seeking legal counsel for a property value guarantee from the Delaware County for the decreasing our value of property without ordinance. Uh, in addition, last Friday, Delaware County Highway Department was trans- was trespassing on my property. I text the commissioners, Brand got back with me, had Tommy Humbert call me. Tommy said he is required to mow side ditches. I asked him for legal proof that he could be there to do that on private property. And he said he didn't have that. That would be something to take up with the commissioners. So I am asking for proof that you have the right to be there using public funds on private property.
Yeah, we have the right to maintain the, the ditches. I believe uh, Mr. Brooke, aren't we allowed? Aren't we allowed to uh, maintain, is it twenty five feet from the center line?
Yes. That's in the, the state statute.
Yeah, so we can provide you with a copy of the state statute.
Delaware County only has the edge of the road. That's been discussed many times.
Yeah, that's not true. Um, I own to the middle of my road where I live.
Yeah.
And I don't know, I could look at your property and see if you're the same way, but many people sitting in this room own to the middle of the road.
Everybody does, but.
Not, not everybody.
Why was it when we had a cable company plowing in the side ditches, the county told me that they could not do anything because it was past the edge of the road. They had no control past the edge of the road. And several years ago, we went through this and I called the county highway department and they, they agreed. They gave permission for someone to plow a cable in. And they told me that they only had to the edge of the road, that the only time this was a problem was when someone knew the law. And my stepfather was surveyor in Delaware County. That's how I know the law.
So you not want them on your property? Is that what you're saying?
That is correct.
Okay. We'll put that in the minutes. Make a note of that and we'll make sure they're not on your property.
Okay.
Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you.
So your ditches won't get mowed?
We mow them ourselves. So does most people.
Good. Just, just to make a note, if it becomes some kind of public safety issue, we will deal with the public safety issue.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, thank you, sir. Okay, there's no one else signed up. Um, Commissioner Rigan, you have any final thoughts?
Well, I am glad that um, the HR director that was here, he just started a little newsletter for our employees. I was very impressed and uh, hope to see more news that might want to go around on Friday afternoon, once a month. Communications is very important in government, that's for sure. Thank you.
Commissioner Brand?
Yeah, I agree. The newsletter is going to be good and if there are topics that uh, the county employees or elected officials or department heads would like to see in that newsletter, please let us know. We'll get to. please let us know. We'll get it in there. Uh, our final town hall for the year is scheduled for December 11th. It's at six o'clock in Selma. That'll be the last one. So talking about communications with the newsletter and then ongoing communication improvements. We're planning a state of the county address, so very similar to how the city of Muncie provides a state of the city address. We're going to provide a state of the county update. And we have agreement with the mayor's office to do that at the same time uh, that the city of Muncie does their state of the city address. So we'll be there providing, uh, an update in parallel. Um, we are working on vacation of some roads and bridges, more to come on that. Uh, finishing up paving the gravel roads for the year. There's one more, uh, that we have to get knocked out. I had burn ban down here, but we took care of that. Also been requested and I support, um, employees. And we'd have to get some training in place and put an ordinance in place, but allowing county employees to carry a firearm in their place of, uh, in their place of work. Um, again, they'd have to have some training to get that done, but, uh, look for that to come in the future. And then I want to thank Elizabeth Wilcox. Uh, she helped a lot with getting the agenda and the packets ready uh, for the commissioners meeting as Jenna was on a well-deserved vacation last week. So I thank, uh, Elizabeth for that and welcome back Jenna.
Very good. Um, this Saturday, I know there's been some, uh, had some functions around. Uh, EMS had a blood drive on Friday. Um, I think they did 11 units of blood? Fif- 15? Maybe? I can't remember. Um, they got my blood, but, uh, it was, it was kind of a, a good thing that EMS had set up out in Yorktown. I think you have more planned. You're going to do one downtown maybe sometime and. Good, good. So that's, that's good. Um, appreciate that. Uh, the Halloween parade is, uh, Saturday, October 25th, 6:00 PM there in Albany. I think, uh, Eaton, I believe, had some kind of parade this weekend.
This past Saturday.
Saturday, yeah.
Ball State Homecoming Parade.
Ball State Homecoming Parade, yeah.
Had that.
So, um, watch for local events and please try to attend those and entertain a motion for recess.
So move.
Second.
We have a motion recess and a second roll call, please.
Commissioner Regan.
Yes.
Commissioner Brand.
Yes.
Mr. Henry.
Yes. We're in recess. Carrie, could you come up here for a minute, please? Yep. Thank you. Appreciate that.